Good morning and welcome to the July thirty first, regular session of Commissioners Court. Uh, we have a full quorum here. Here you certify me was properly posted. You'll please rise for prayer and pledges. Mr. Necker?
Father, we come before you. Picking your presence in this court. If you may add the gentleman in protecting that you would have him. Father, in the beginning, chapter three and verse twenty, we read now unto him. That is able to do exceeding abundantly above all that we ask for, thank according to the power that works within us. And to him be glory in the church by Christ Jesus throughout all ages or without end. Amen. Father, we ask for it to you. So brother said, we continue to serve you. May we be humbled by these words that we just read. Father, may we utilize it, sharing control of everything and we give you that authority. Go with us and forgive us where we fail in each name we first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and United States of America. And to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with every single. On the inscription of the flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one nation, under God, one.
We have any citizens input?
Yes, sir, not that I'm aware of.
Our consent agenda contains eleven items. I need to pull any?
Three and eight for me.
Three and eight.
And nine, boy, yeah.
Eight, no.
I might the motion except the consent agenda pulling three, eight.
Second.
Moving, saying all favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Number three, approve payments of claims and invoices submitted for payments.
Uh, Patricia, make it in.
She's coming.
Somebody might want to do this. Larry, you in? Oh, Larry?
Uh, Kim Rurick's on.
What page you on?
Uh, page four of thirty-three, the tax risk management pool, that deductible claim. Thirty-nine, twenty-two. Anybody know what that is?
Four of thirty-three.
Four thirty-three. Tax risk management pool.
Put that on the screen, please.
So I can ask it later.
That's right, yeah. It's got a P O attached to it. So it's.
I mean, it's, uh, it's gone through audit and all that, but I'm just curious what it did.
Or lawsuit.
Lawsuit.
Lawsuit. Okay. And then on the, uh, page five. Best, best deeds tower services, done some tower repair.
We had, uh.
What happened to that tower?
One of the cables that broke, that hold stabilized it out there, uh, tamrode. So it was replaced.
That's all on that one. You want to make a motion to approve. Y'all got anything on?
I do, but I think it's a few questions. I'll just wait and ask for them.
Okay. All right, I'm like a motion to approve claims and invoices submitted for payment. So.
Moving, saying all favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Number eight, receive orders. For salary of twelfth judicial district court reporter, two seventy-eighth judicial district court reporter. And the county auditor and assistants for budget year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four.
Uh, this may be also a trick question. I don't know, but, uh. The heck, the county auditor and all of her employees. Did it stay the same as we got in the salary study? Did it go above market? Anybody know?
I thought it was just four or five percent increase.
So they've added a four or five percent.
Whatever we're figuring. I thought, I'm not speaking for anybody.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I can't vote on this.
Probably have. We can, you said Kim Rurack is out there. Can we ask Kim?
Kim, you out there?
Yes, sirs. Good morning. Um, the, um, members that are in the order that are in front of you. Uh, include the four percent, just like the rest of the county would get.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, what, why are you there, Kim? Do you know on the, uh? Order for the court reporters? Did they go up the same amount or?
Good morning.
Ask me that again.
We talking to you now or we still got Kim? She was on up there somewhere. The, the court reporters, I guess, Patricia, I mean, how much did, did they increase those from last year?
The court reporters, five percent.
Five percent? Right, that's all I have.
But the others are four percent?
Four, yeah. What about chair department?
Uh, right now it's based on the four percent and then if the court does more, it would adjust to what the court does.
Okay, and that's the same with the court reporters, too.
No, the court reporters were done.
I don't know that I agree with that.
I don't either, but I do know that they have authority to do it.
It's in the position that was budgeted as a two last year, it was budgeted as a three, and that is covered through increasing.
Okay.
Hmm.
And keep in mind, uh, court reporters for the district courts, that salary is split between three different counties for each of those.
Yeah. Okay, so they, they got them basically at five percent. And then if we do five percent or whatever, then if it goes above the four.
It stays at.
It stays at five regardless. If we get ten percent, it's still be five.
Unless they did a new order, but.
Don't think y'all getting ten, because you're not. As an example, there you go. Okay, all right. You agree with it or not? Damn, which of dogs?
You already know what I think. I think it kind of, it just kind of is what it is.
Yeah. Yeah, well, they, they do have the authority to do it, no doubt. I mean, it's in the, uh. Local government code. I don't always agree with what the code says either, but it is in there. They have the authority to do it.
Yep. I make the motion for it if you want to approve it, Jen, not in number eight.
I just can't give you a second.
You got a second. All in favor, raise your right hand.
I'll vote for it, but I can't give you a second.
Number nine, received twenty twenty-three railroad rolling stock certificate for Walker County.
I asked to pull this, because this is a first time, so you can look on the quick. So, is anybody, Mr. Tricia, do you know anything about?
Yes, this is the values for, of course, the railroad, the rolling stock. And there is a separate company that appraises that and they turn in that appraisal to the appraisal district, something that happens every year. The calculation as any other property. Uh, so just basically an appraisal, outside appraisal of the, the rolling stock that's in Walker County.
Have we ever seen it before?
Yes, sir.
We have?
Typically, Diana would just send it to the county judge's office, because I believe that was her only requirement to send it to county judge. And because I had received it and we have a new court. I, um, asked if I could put it on as a receipt.
So I have seen this in the past, right?
Like, we've gotten them, yes.
We've never had it on court.
County judge's office. Like I said, I think it's just, um, the notification to the judge.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm making a motion, we accept number nine.
Second.
Uh, pay raise your hand. Motion carries. Uh, number twelve, discuss and take action on approval of county court at law court reporter salary to be equal to that of the twelfth and two seventy-eight. District court reporter salary for the budget year twenty twenty-three and twenty-four. Tracy couldn't be here this morning. She's got a, uh, golf tournament for her son. It just reads that all the court reporters are going to be on the same pay scale.
Where, where was the other one, her other one paid or doesn't, what she has now? Where, where's the pay scale today?
Court reporters have always been paid the same and, uh, court at law, uh, follows what the district judges do.
So it'd be five percent?
I'll make the motion to approve agenda item twelve. That's presented.
I'll second.
Moving, second of all, favor, raise your right hand.
Well, look.
Motion carries. Number thirteen, discuss and take action on approval of expenses associated with Texas Jail Association Conference, May one through the fifth. Twenty twenty-three in the amount of three hundred dollars for T J A conference registration and credit card charges in the amount of one thousand six hundred and seventy-eight dollars and forty-nine cents for hotel reservations.
I visited with the sheriff, sheriff.
Yes, sir, that's what I'm here for. Uh, had the opportunity to visit both our, our attorney, our visual attorney, uh, with Quentin, then with tax association. Uh, both of these expenses are work-related expenses, not something that we had seen before, not something we will, it will continue. Uh, if everybody's going to have problems with it, and it's in, um, clean way to steal a work-related expense, I'm here to ask you gentlemen, uh, to allow me to take a training budget. Is my main permission.
I'm like the motion to approve paying the claims on the sheriff's office. I'll second it.
Moving, saying all favor, raise your right hand.
Thank you, sir.
Number fourteen, special prosecution unit, discuss and take action on the commercial lease agreement between Scott Brown Commercial. And Special Prosecution Unit, Walker County for the Denton office location.
Oh, Jack.
Good morning, commissioners. Uh, here asking for approval on, uh, the, uh, lease for our office. Called our northern office. In the past, it's been in Decatur, uh, but abruptly our landlord in Decatur raised the rent and asked us to also. Pay for insurance, uh, property taxes and all those other things that we're not used to paying for in a lease. So we had to get busy. And we found an office, uh, that's comparable in Denton County, which is a little bit. Different distance away, but at least it still gives us a good area. Location to cover a lot of the T J J needs, still needs to work towards the Dallas or Flex area. So. Uh, it's, this, this isn't an increase in the rent, slight increase, uh, but we should be able to handle it through budget funds.
That was good, Jack. I know you read over it because you're an attorney, so.
Not only did I read it, but also. It's, it's been looked over twice now, but this could allow us to keep a presence there in the north for all our lawyers and staff in that part of the world.
For me, I made the motion to approve agenda item fourteen as presented.
Second.
Moving, saying it all, favor, raise your right hand.
Thank you, Jack.
Fifteen, discuss and take action on ratifying burn ban issue. July twenty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And I did some checking on numbers this morning. And, uh, looking at the drought index, which is a D zero to D four. Uh, being D zero abnormally dry and D four extremely dry. Uh, Walker County, the northern part of North, uh, Walker County is in a D one, which is moderately dry. And the central south part is in the big zero, which is not abnormally dry. Uh, the minimum on the K B D I this morning was five eighty-three. The max was seven sixty and the average was seven zero six. Uh, the Trinity River is, I think, below normal. The day thirty this morning, it was one twenty-nine point four one.
Yeah.
And I believe we need to keep the ground being enough.
Can, can we, uh, Quentin, I guess I need to ask you this, instead of ratifying this one, can we just issue a new one under that new wording?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. I mean, does it need to be done under this agenda item when we move down?
We can actually do another this agenda item.
That would be my motion is to, uh, approve the burn ban under the new. wording that was, it's going to be approved in a few minutes.
I'll second that.
Moving, saying it all, favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Number sixteen, discuss and take action on approval of proposed wording for future burn ban orders.
I, I make that motion right quick, so it don't last long.
Well, so that can, I'll let, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Seventeen, discuss and take action on memorandum of understanding between Walker County and First United Methodist Church concerning donation management.
Hey, we, in the past, we have had a donations manager and it started out as Ellen Willis. And then as he left, there was another gentleman, Carlson, that came in and took that position. It was appointed by the court. Uh, we haven't had one since he left and with the changes in the Methodist Church. We approached them and, uh, they are willing to do the donations management. So during a disaster. Instead of donations being spread all over the world, they go to one place. Uh, they catalog stuff separated and, and if we need it, we can pass it out. This has worked in the past and I think we need to continue this, uh, day with, uh, in the First United Methodist Church.
Second.
I can motion approve, uh, number seventeen as presented.
Second.
Moving, saying it all, favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Do you see your letter to the editor, Mr. Davis? Mr. Davis, you had a letter to the editor last week in the paper. Did you read it? It was really good talking about, you talked to the lines club, they're right. They recommended you on your knowledge and, uh, how prepared Walker County is.
Absolutely. It's a great, so I read it.
I think it was in Saturday's paper. So, so, yep. Number eighteen, discuss and take action on P R number three two eight three seven authorized purchase of Dell Latitude from G T S Technology Solutions through. D I R T S O three seven six three R contract using project equipment allocation and funds for the total amount of one thousand fourteen dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Good morning. This is your place, guys, number one, two, two, eight, seven. It's a laptop currently using, purchased in twenty fifteen. And it's time for a replacement.
I'll make that motion to approve agenda item eight as presented.
Second.
Moving, saying it all, favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Number nineteen, discuss and take action to approve amendment to model year and award by board purchase price. There's public safety vehicle purchase order number four, one, two, three, three.
Okay, on this one, we've had some upper disorder for, uh, upholding requirements, emergency management. Hospital facing, for our sheriff's office. And that is all. And on line number five and six, uh. Vehicles that were requested to be purchased was a twenty, a little model. Uh, Chevy Silverado and a twenty-four and two for the sheriff's office, twenty-four model Chevy Silverado, we've received twenty threes. Um, due to that, basically the, um, dealership had them on stock. They wanted to get the order out. So because they pushed out twenty-three models, I wanted to reflect that in the purchase orders, so we would do a change and also to get credit or not be. So, and speaking with the dealership, we should, they should credit our account with two thousand nine seventy-three for the difference, uh, between the original and up to here.
So that part of vehicle? So it'd be that times three. Okay. I just make sure what worded like that. Okay.
Save, save a little bit of money anyway.
Yes, and for, or for future vehicles that we get, I'll go through and make sure that we're losing the twenty-five, who knows?
Yeah. Thanks, Doc.
Do you have a motion on that?
That'd be my motion to approve.
Moving, saying it all, favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Thank you, love.
Number twenty, discuss and take actions to approve Walker County Personnel Policy Section nine point oh two on social media applications and services. Amy?
A state bill passed in June. That requires county to adopt their written policy for, for giving, um, some social media applications on county devices. So tax, there's not to give us a sample policy. So we use this. So this is a policy. I'll, uh, put it in the manual and send it out today to everybody.
Sounds good to me.
I'll make the motion to approve agenda item twenty as presented.
I'll second that.
Moving, saying it all, favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Number twenty-one, discuss and take action to waive any and all fees related to John Stubblefield's septic system to be installed.
Yes, sir, I had this put on court because, Andy, I know you're aware, we just recently approved it through the state fund, so. Would like our court to waive all the fees associated with it. That's my motion. I'll second that.
Moving, saying it all, favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Twenty-two, discuss and take action on road repairs on to dipping vat road and Lone Star Road with the amount not to exceed. Ten thousand dollars and to be exempt from Walker County purchasing policy.
The amount to exceed.
Mount to exceed, oh, Mount to exceed.
So it goes over the purchase amount.
Yeah, but it's two exceed.
Two exceed. Yes. Uh, had this put on, I don't really have the equipment at this point. We're trying to round up all the saws and. Things that we need to actually work on, on asphalt itself. And, uh, Ronnie's been doing it, Ronnie Waters, he gave us a quote on it. There's nine different sites that we've looked at and I think y'all see most of them here. And if my arithmetic is close to correct, it's about fifty-five tons of, uh, pot mix that he's got to use. So that kind of gives you an idea of his expense plus the labor. But we'd have to make him a, uh, vendor, because I don't think he's a vendor yet with the county, so we'd have to get him. To be a vendor to be able to do it for us, but, uh, would, would like to ask that this point. That he be authorized to do this. It does go, uh, above my ten thousand threshold and gets up close to twenty thousand.
Definitely below the fifty.
But it's, yeah, below the fifty, so, okay.
About ten thousand and seventy-four dollars.
Yes, it's just under twenty. So, but anyway, that's my motion to approve this, uh, him as the vendor to do it, as long as we get him set up as a vendor.
I have some questions.
Go ahead.
Um, you. Me normally, being the county, will do the, the work ourselves, but we just get the supplies. From our, uh, road, uh, contract that we have already. From Vulcan and this and another, but you're saying you don't have these.
I, I, I do not have the, the equipment to actually cut that out and pack it back in.
Okay.
We're going to have to buy all that equipment to be able to work on these asphalt roads.
Yeah, right, true.
Anybody else? Laura?
If you don't have a second, I'll second that one. Okay.
I'm just asking to be exempt from the, uh, purchasing policy on the above ten thousand.
Part of them are being exempt, but that's okay.
Hey, this is a court decision.
Right.
I understand. Did I get a second?
Yep, moving, saying it all, favor, raise your right hand. Twenty, motion passing. Twenty-three, discuss and take action to approve certification or certification of construction completion grant work C D B G G L O Hurricane Harvey Grant. Contract two zero dash zero six five dash one oh four dash C two seven nine.
I don't know, is Johnny Green out there? Can we see him? I'll do it. He's not.
He's not.
Not, all right, um. This is just kind of the wrap-up document. We had a walk-through a couple of weeks ago down Coontz. And, and plantation both from beginning to end on both him and his inspector they brought with him were satisfied with the work. So this is just the paperwork to fill it out. And sign myself and the judge to file back as G L O as a completed, as completed project. So I'll make the motion to approve agenda item twenty-three as presented.
Second.
Moving, saying it all, favor, raise your right hand.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Twenty-four, discuss county policy on acceptance of new roads for county maintenance.
This has been something we've been kind of kicking around a couple, I guess, a couple of months now. I did a real informal online survey of. Members of TAC that are on this listserv. And, um, the map, go ahead and scroll up, out, Ashen, if you would. The best I can tell them, we had some conflicting information, some, in some counties, one commissioner would say, we don't take any roads. And then another commissioner would say, we take some roads. So it's, it's not by any means a true in-depth scientific. But it does kind of show, it looks like the central Texas region area. Though that group is moving towards not taking any new roads. Our area out here, which is the blue, and I think there's some yellow in there. Um, they take all or they consider all of them or, or take some of them. Um, so our court, I think. We are not going to do it today. This is really just an informational thing and a conversation thing. I think we need to start looking. Down the future road as to what we're going to do, um, road-wise. Um, some things have changed on the roads. That our predecessors, um, didn't have to deal with, and that was. Just outside the city limits, a developer would come in and build a subdivision, um, West Ridge, Alkins Lake, Sterling Ridge and stuff around the periphery. And then when it got done and kind of settled in, the city would come annex it and it would become part of the city and would never be a county road. Well, in today's world, they don't annex anymore. They're pretty much not allowed to. So if it's outside the city limits, it's always going to be outside the city limits and will always be our road. There's no hope of a road ever dropping back and becoming a city street. And no longer being a county road. Uh, so it's, we're a little unique in that we have a lot of open land up here still in Walker County that people are coming into. And putting subdivisions in. And in those subdivisions are roads, um, just to our south, Montgomery County. There's not a whole lot of area in Montgomery County that's not within, um, an incorporated city or a township like the Woodlands or something like that. So their roads as, as those neighborhoods grow, like City of Congress growing by, um. People requesting to come in for some reason. But anyway, they're, so there, those, the roads in the county down there are actually kind of shrinking. And that's why you look at Montgomery County budget, you see in their counties, precincts, they have, they have parks and libraries and all these other things. Because they don't have to do a lot of roads. In fact, when we visited precinct three down there, they were looking on a map. Searching for roads to go work on because they had all this money and no place to go with it. And it was a nice problem to have, but. What I wanted to bring up to our court is, um. We should put it on agenda, had to talk about this stuff. This is kind of what's around us. Like I say, central is almost like nothing around us. Um, I know Houston County is not taking any, I think Madisonville or Madison County, they're back and forth. I think, I think that's one where, uh. An old commissioner said, I'm not taking them. And I think a new commissioner said we were, um, Missouri was the same way. Uh, but it's a conversation we need to have. Um, my thoughts are, we look at subdivisions and maybe. Um, everyone is unique and maybe we, uh, talk to them about if they have a main road, I may have said this separate before, if they have a main road in and a main. I may have said this separate before, if they have a main road in and a main road out, we talked about this main road will be a county road. But your your five hundred foot cul-de-sacs, all twenty of them, we don't necessarily want those. Those those might be up for you to take care of. Or we might discuss um upgrading the quality of the road from an asphalt road to a a concrete road. If they want to be considered for as a county road, make it a county, make it a concrete road. And in today's world, concrete and asphalt aren't getting too far apart in the construction price either. So um except I put it up today because we kind of talked about it. And rather than wander from a another agenda item and and segue into it, we just put it up there. So if y'all want to discuss it at all today, we can just keep the can down the road a little bit and have a workshop on it another day and kind of maybe look at some current developments as to what we would do if they walked in tomorrow versus already being here.
Well, I don't disagree with anything you said, because I've taken forty miles of road in precinct two since I've been here. And the funding's not there to take care of that road that they're taking in. Are we gonna have to look at either our acceptance policy or how to fund these roads and do something different?
Yeah, you do, because it's a a Chypso road. We talked about it on the phone. Chypso road is about what, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a mile? To to grind it up and redo it, and we make four hundred and something of revenue into our road and bridge fund. So you're talking three miles out in your case now of a hundred and sixty. You 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 never catch up that way.
You can never, we're gonna get further behind. Yeah, I and I don't know the answer, oh, but but I I will say this, I think we're gonna have to look at not taking all the roads. I think we're gonna have to definitely look at that.
And and.
You were far enough behind as well.
Yeah, and I and I like the idea of inviting developers in, you know, we have three or four people who do a lot of work here and and bring them in and talk to them about it and let them be part of the conversation. Then it comes, turns into something that we all, you know, we all recognize the issue and and maybe work towards something that everybody can live with. Maybe not everybody's a hundred percent happy with it, but it's something we can all live with. So I don't know what the answer answer is, but I'll kick the conversation off with that and we can have a workshop.
Yeah, and and that may be what we need to do, go get the workshop on and and try to invite some of the developers that's local.
Yeah.
Get them here and let them let them express their concerns also.
Yeah, because I haven't heard from anybody, but I understand y'all might have.
I've heard from a few folks, yes.
Okay.
Because most of them didn't like what I had to say.
It's kind of annoying. Alright. So no action, I'll think, Judge, just something, maybe bring it back later. Thank you.
Alright, number twenty-five, discuss and take action on approving purchase of AMGO Pro eighteen auto lift for a road and bridge three not to exceed eighty-four hundred dollars from host L S.
We are um doing more and more maintenance at our shop, especially things like oil changes and stuff like that, and even rotating tires at times. So um we have a spot under a cover that this um lift would fit under. And um we've got the quotes and the P O in place, but it's over five thousand becoming a fixed asset. So I just need permission from the court to buy it out of my funds. So my motion is to approve agenda item twenty-five as presented.
Moving, saying no, favor raise your hand.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Twenty-six, discuss and take action on tax abatement agreement between Zener USA and Walker County. So the committee met the other day. And you want to talk about anything?
You know, here, I already answered any questions.
Okay, the committee wants to make a recommendation and do the second tier, the three million to ten million dollar project cost. Uh it'll be three years of one hundred percent abatement, scheduled down to eighty, sixty, forty, and twenty. Now, in the form of a motion.
Right, who who was the committee?
That would be me, Danny Kirkendall, and Andrew Isabel, who sent in with us.
Wh- where did you end up again? I didn't, I don't have.
I don't have any backup.
We're sitting here.
Okay.
What'd you say, George, three?
It's thirty one hundred year, three one hundred percents and eighty, sixty, twenty, and then it goes away. On a seven-year scale.
It's probably on my computer, I just didn't do it here.
The committee, so.
So are we doing, this is a little a confusion, are we doing a hundred percent?
We're going to do a tax base at twenty twenty-three, and the new tax will be the one hundred percent.
So it'll be aligned with what the city. What the city's doing. So anything over the twenty twenty-three, we're refunding back.
All right, so give me a little history about how many employees you're gonna be here and all that, because I'm really, and it's kind of in the dark on it.
In the narrative I wrote there, it'll be about approximately fifty employees through now on the end of.
I think it'd be so excellent for our county, we're coming ahead and trying to get some manufacturing in here, some large number of people at a facilities. I'm a, I'm gonna make the motion to approve agenda item twenty-six as presented.
I'll second that. All in favor, you have any more questions? All favor raise your hand. Okay.
See you here, thank.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Based on the information the committee provided me and the court's action today, I will send to each member of the board a draft. Be sending it over to Zener for them to review, and then you can formalize the agreement at that point when you sign off on it, that you'll have a chance for the unit to make its submission.
Okay.
Now that this is approved, so I have to wait to proceed with the building.
Yes, because it's a but the agreement has not been signed and executed, is not effective until it's signed and executed. We are.
Wait next Monday.
That's a special section for next Monday. I actually came in this weekend and most of the agreement is done. I just picked a couple of things and then I'll send it out to members of the court and to you for your your counsel to review it. Once everybody's reviewed and signed off on it, we can see the chart on Monday.
So next Monday, we'll have it back in court for approval, let's say.
Also, I mean, we, I mean, we can't physically tell him not to proceed. It's just a buyer beware kind of.
I was asking, there's some trigger that's okay to proceed. I didn't know that the approval was the trigger or their.
Part of the agreement that has drafted, the court's authorized and the judge to sign this agreement, so. We're, at this point, you've you've already laid out the terms.
It's right here, yeah.
Over seven years.
Right.
The agreement as drafted or as intended to be drafted says that Zener will have fifty employees no later than December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Right.
And they will maintain at least those fifty employees throughout the terms of the agreement. If you're all completely on that, your motion here is to approve that agreement. If you want to amend your motion to include authorizing the judge to sign it.
Absolutely.
Generally, the court likes to review a document before they sign, before they have anybody sign it. That's why I was thinking Monday.
I would rather review it.
You okay with Monday?
Yeah, it's another week. This time is shortening up on me because I got three and a half months now to move that.
Yeah, yeah.
We we've jumped on this pretty quick to begin with, so.
Okay, we're gonna leave the motion as is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Twenty-seven, discuss and take action to authorize county judges submit a request for the extension of the grant work CDBG GLO Hurricane Harvey contract twenty dash zero six five dash one oh four dash C two seven nine to September thirtieth. That should be twenty twenty-four, not twenty twenty-three. That's for the hundred and six thousand dollar extension. Hundred and six nine oh one.
If I don't move it somewhere in motion, we could slip it to twenty-seven with the corrections of twenty twenty.
Second, with the correction.
Moving, saying it all, favor raise your hand.
Before you vote real quick, so um so the second paragraph, the county is committed to utilizing all of the remaining six hundred and fifty thousand of the originally awarded budget towards the stated project goals. The county has also been offered an additional allocation of one oh six. So is it six hundred and fifty plus one oh six?
Um, well.
That's kind of, that's kind of how I'm. Yeah, we're telling them we're not going to spend the six fifty, and they gave us another hundred and fifty. Yeah. Um.
But we probably, except for this, we probably need to set up some kind of workshop.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking pretty, pretty quickly on that one, like next Monday. Alright, so I'm gonna, I'll make the motion, you've already got the.
Our extension letter is due today.
Yeah, we're gonna approve the letter. Then I think we do a workshop next Monday and try to hammer something out real quick. And and we can ask the question between now, because it is kind of worded, kind of, if you don't know about the six fifty, if we spent that yet.
Right.
And then they get, I remember they gave us the extra hundred and six, I remember that, that wouldn't have been too long ago. But that's seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars all of a sudden, which I could spend in precinct three.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Alright, so let's approve the letter and then get that in the books and we'll figure.
Absolutely.
I got a motion and a second all in favor raise your hand. Motion carries. Twenty-nine, receive certi-certified estimates and receive preliminary calculations of the no new revenue tax rate and voter approved. Am I reading the? Oh, sorry. Alright, I cross that one out. Discuss and take action, number twenty-eight, discuss and take action to approve Walker County applicants to the twenty twenty-three Huntsville Leadership Institute, Rachel Parker, Ally Hargis, and Mally Martin, and waive a five-year employment requirement.
They all seem like very good applicants to go.
Yeah, in our policy, it basically says we're gonna put them all on a hat, that we're gonna send two people, right?
That's what it says.
Do we have a problem sending three?
I do not have a problem. I'm actually gonna recommend we send three. These are three, actually.
We sent one last year and we allowed it to two and I recommend we do all of our ingredients, waive the.
Yeah, yes, yeah, yeah.
That's your motion, Josh.
That's my motion, is to waive, there we go. Moving, saying all in favor raise your hand.
We got it. I think it's, I think it's good applicants are from three different worlds. I think it's good.
And right. Okay, now we're down with twenty-nine. Receive certified estimates and receive preliminary calculations of the no new revenue tax rate and voter approval tax rate from Walker County Appraisal District. Assessor submitted the appraisal role or certified estimates for the taxing unit showing total appraised assets, assessed and taxable values of the properties and the taxable values of all the properties, submission of role to a governing body, no new revenue and voter approval tax rate stacked code, section two six dash oh four.
Okay.
Want to talk about that, Ms. Allen?
Yeah, did receive from the appraisal district certified, that's rather than certified values. Uh in order to certify the values, they have to have ninety-five percent of the property uh certified under the role. They were at uh ninety-four percent at that time. So a statute required them to submit certified estimates. When you get the estimates, you still calculate your uh tax rates based on those numbers. But you cannot um hold a public hearing or adopt a rate until after the role is certified and the public has been notified of their actual certified values. So you have in your agenda packet the the certified estimates. Um also, uh over the weekend, the appraisal district did provide us with um graph calculations. Um and on the very back of your handout, um of course, our current role was point four four nine hour.
Right.
Uh the no new revenue tax rate, uh the calculated rate was forty point four seven cents. Um and then the voter approval tax rate is forty-six point seven six.
But it's a good news year, whereas that's next. It's a four and a half cent um growth, basically, in our county. Uh based on our preliminary budget discussions, we can go down the road, we can still possibly lower this tax rate three cents to the people, which is an awesome thing, and still take care of the business we want to take care of.
That one's good for now.
Yep. Any idea when the when the official stuff rolls in, any idea?
Uh her kind of four four out estimate was by the middle of the month before they actually got certified. And um I think they're making headway on that.
Okay.
Anybody got anything else on that? Alright, number thirty, discuss and take action to designate the Walker County Appraisal District to calculate the final no new revenue tax rate and voter approval rate.
Yeah, we do this every year, so.
Yes.
I'll make the motion to approve agenda item thirty.
Moving, saying it all, favor raise your hand. Motion carries. My name's Belman, number thirty-one, public hearing concerning replat of lots thirteen and fourteen, block one, section one of the Texas Grand Ranch subdivision, Jay Lehman, survey A dash three two seven Texas Grand Road. Uh time is nine forty-two.
You gone two-way?
Right, I take it as a couple.
We got anybody here to talk on this one?
This is kind of a common.
Andy, you got anything?
It's on our screen.
Yeah, it's Texas Grand Ranch. You're looking at a combination of lots of replat, or the quarters of replat.
Anybody else?
That's it.
Time is nine forty-three, poke and closed. We'll go to thirty-two, discuss and take action on plat number twenty twenty-three dash zero three four. Replay of lots thirteen and fourteen, block one, section one of the Texas Grand Ranch subdivision, Jay Lehman, survey A dash three two seven, Texas Grand Road.
Any concerns, Andy?
No, it's gonna be pretty standard.
Okay, that's kind of what I look at. It looks like it's what we normally.
Putting it together, making fewer lot, fewer bigger lot.
Fewer bigger lots, okay. I'll make a motion to approve agenda item thirty-two as presented.
Moving, saying it all, favor raise your hand. Motion case, thirty-three, discuss and take action on Edward Lee Miller request for variance to section four point nine of the Walker County subdivision regulations regarding requirement for showing entire parent track boundaries for plat number two zero two three dash zero two nine. Replay of the E Miller five acre track. Anderson League A two uh forty-five north.
So the request is, he's he's trying to add some additional acreage here to the church site. Up here, this was the original five acre track. Trying to add some additional space to it out of the track that 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 surrounds it. He's asking simply not to have to show, to have to do all the survey work, show all the boundaries of the original track. The frontages here are not shifting. Um that's the request. Yeah, I don't have any objection to.
Both of them, it's the brand of the craft, so.
The original five, I added out, so this is a replat.
I don't know what they're gonna do. I don't know if it's more parking. I hadn't talked to him, but I don't.
Uh he is online, I believe. There is a Miller online.
Yes, I'm online. Any questions?
Morning, Bo.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any questions, Bo. I I don't know if the rest of the court does. I'll make a motion with set number thirty-three.
Second.
Moving, saying it all, favor raise your hand. Motion carries. Thirty-four, discuss. Yes, sir, thank you, Bo. Discuss and take action on plat number twenty twenty-three dash oh nine, replay of E Miller five acre track, E Anderson League, A two I forty-five north.
This is the same plot with the actual.
I'll make a motion with set plat number zero uh two zero twenty-three dash zero nine.
Second.
Moving, saying it all, favor raise your hand. Motion carries. Thirty-five, discuss and take action on Atlas Land Partners LLC request for variance to section three point three six of the Walker County subdivision regulations regarding waiver of the requirement of groundwater certification for plat number two zero two two dash zero four one, Governor's Ranch subdivision, S A Mill Survey, A dash four oh eight, I forty-five north, Brimberry Cemetery Road.
That made a lot change in there, Andy.
Just under a hundred, just under a hundred. An acre plus lots. Um it's under a hundred fifty, it's all uh going in numbers. Uh, going numbers on the feeder of thirty-five on the east side. Right there by.
Yeah, so everything's ten acres or bigger.
Everything's to make a order.
I mean, that, that never.
Someone here. Yes. Subdivision's here.
Yeah, I'm David Parkinson, representative of the under Atlas Land Partners of Heather Bridge. Uh, I'm a licensed engineer.
And Zach is online, probably.
Yeah.
Well, as well. The branch request is similar in nature to some of the ones that the court heard, the scale, developments. Same with that, still in the area of the county. Um. Society issue, literally applied to your decision today, but. And just so the court's aware, I know you guys have been dealing with the groundwater, uh, within our subdivision policy, the current subdivision policy adopted groundwater requirements. Back in June of last year, under a statute. That allowed for friends to either do it or not do it. Well, just, the legislature's passed a bill. Coming in January. It, it, it becomes mandatory. Uh, the county's adopted. There's some carve-out provisions in it. Uh, we may, we might be subject to some of those because of the aquifers that we sit over the top of. But just so you know. As we proceeded in with this issue, I know that there's been a lot of discussion about, you know, how to handle these moving forward or some. The state has provided you guys with some additional guidance that wasn't.
Well, of course, you know, I, I've had concerns about this many water wells popping up in one area. For a while, yeah. I don't know that I've ever really got a hundred percent answer. If, if you drill a well in the middle of a ten acre field. Does it pull out from underneath the other guys next to the ten acre field or not? Yeah. Because I mean, that's something I, I don't, I don't know. I mean.
We, uh, we talked with Zach quite a bit. Uh, uh, early on, just discussing this project, and of course. Uh, it's a highly restricted subdivision in the CCNRs. Uh, this property owner. Has agreed in other locations, and in this, of course, to limit uh. Water usage on each lot, A, one, one well per lot. And then limit the gallons per day you. Eight or ten of what is allowed. Under state regulations for one well on ten acres. Uh, and they max, so they max out the use, and then they open uh the uh POA. To an opportunity for metering as necessary or as requested. By groundwater district, if it ever became necessary, so they could. Uh, voluntarily meter water wells in this.
So how do you restrict somebody on pumping water?
Yeah, I was curious. That was my question.
So you, uh. A, uh, Bluebonnet had requested of a, a minimum depth for. Uh, drilling of these wells, which of course has been put into the district. Because the lower uh. Tables are, are more effective for water service.
So what is that minimum depth?
Both.
What is the depth?
Uh, is what we have in there and, and Zach is, and, and is, we're open to any edits necessary.
So no, nothing. Can you get to three fifty?
This is off the uppers. And so it pulls out the lower sand, and so.
Alright, so, so if you don't find a sand at three fifty and it's six hundred foot to the sign. What do they do then?
You know, six hundred.
So it's, uh, right now, there's been two wells drilled. And those two came back excellent, sixty gallons a minute, no problems plus. Uh, and to that depth, pacing off the upper where nearby. Uh, residents to the, I guess, four miles to the north, three miles north of the nearest, and those are on that. Uh, a hundred foot stand.
And you got water at three hundred? Sir, you got good water at three hundred, huh?
We did. Yeah, J and S drilling could be, uh, the ones, and they're continuing this.
So how deep is that well? You said three fifty, oh, no.
They were, they were done. And they were three fifty plus. I think they're actually four hundred both.
Okay.
Yeah, I know the water's not. Great out there.
One, one had some sulfur, one was clear.
Right. I don't know. I still have issues with punching that many wells all over this county. People's lived here their entire lives. We're gonna drain the water for them.
Yeah.
You know, so I, I. I don't know. I just got a major issue with it.
But it's also the reason for larger acre lots to.
Yeah.
To take the lots.
There's a subdivision restricted to the same family.
Restricted to his family, restricted and then for discovered, restricted structures, restricted one well, restricted the usage.
About one of them for the.
Restricted against.
Alright, so. Just so the courts on the same page, three point three six currently provides. Um, there's a certification that has to be provided. Of the, I don't know. To the, it's part of the plat application. Or under the land. Um. Um, is prepared by an engineer licensed to practice in state Texas or a geoscientist. Certifies adequate groundwater is available, subdivision. Sir, and the certificate shall be submitted with a TCQ through form. The court shall include a satisfactory letter, receipt and comment from Bluebonnet Groundwater Conservation District. The, the request that, the, that I have, the grant request for you guys. Is to wait for requirement of certification. Or is it to alter, is it over an alternate certification based on alternate method? Not even, yeah, so you still have a certified, there's a way in groundwater with, but instead of using the TCQ through the board, use an alternative methodology. Or waiver of the certification altogether.
Well, we prefer the waiver certification, but uh, we have wells drilled, so there is some information.
So that's what's before you guys right now, the, the, the language it's in.
Damn, y'all don't have water out there, do you? No, we're close.
We'd have to get under the interstate. We gotta. Close, but it's in the city CCN, but that's not a problem either. They could have city certified. It is. There is a, there is a way to do, uh. An organized water system. For sure. We're, we're close. The city's closer, but they're already uh out of capacity, I think they're close to capacity. With the uh, the two truck stops that they, they got on the, on the feeder road, so they're. They're not really a viable cost effective offer. We, we haven't done the numbers, we weren't asked to either, so.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what it would take y'all to get there. Probably quite a bit to get under the freeway.
It's a hundred and thirty.
Yeah, that's a hundred and thirty two wells.
Um, so this, again, to put us on the same page, what the request is for is not to certify the presence of ground.
Right.
Instead of provide a report from an engineer. A geoscientist says, recommends a well depth. Right, that note would then be added to the plat. And there's still. Some requests have been. Uh, made to waive the Bluebonnet's uh review, so the other two bench approved. Had the, the Bluebonnet uh offering a letter of objection, so.
The other two were small lots. I mean, I mean, lots did we have on them?
Uh, they were both under fifteen.
So I mean, that was very small lots. This is, this is a lot of people. This is a hundred and. Thirty something, is that what you said? Hundred and thirty-two lots. I mean, I, I just.
Yeah.
I don't think I can go along with it.
Takes some time to develop.
Yeah.
It may be a very long time.
But just a question, if. Um. Doing the math real quick, if there's a hundred and thirty-two lots. And just throwing a ten thousand dollar a well. Price at, it's like a million three hundred thousand dollars. It would be basically just, it'd be a customer cost.
That's twenty thousand dollars for that well. That's not gonna be.
That's twenty thousand, so that's double.
So that's two. Forty hundred would cost me fourteen thousand.
Okay, so that's two, you're looking at twenty. So two point five, two point five million um additional, is that? Without getting into the development world, I mean, have you visited with Walker County?
That wouldn't touch the cost of an extension of that magnitude and going under a freeway and developing pump stations and everything else. It's just not viable off. Which is also the source of the acreage size requested, the TC, actually.
Okay.
Yeah, you say you're close, but. Don't stop it. Don't stop at the ranch, right?
No.
Oh, coming that way. I was thinking of coming up seventy-five. Okay.
So you're not too far.
Yeah, be close if coming up seventy-five, but that's, uh. But still, it's pretty ways to there. Um. You know, I'm kind of like Ronnie on this. I mean, it's a, it's an awful big subdivision to, uh. Taking a chance on. Uh, they, uh, Zach. Uh, we'd like to hear from you, I guess, on this too. I know he hadn't had his input yet.
Good morning.
Morning.
Uh, yeah, I mean, our, our general. Concepts and, and, and thoughts are. Kind of looking forward of, of, if at least, you know, identifying that there are um available options, um regardless of whether that's. Uh, you know, just going through and going down the, uh, the path of the individual water wells, which, uh. You know, in, in discussions and everything else have, have kind of gone and done a lot of the legwork on the front end on, on kind of heading off and, and addressing a lot of the. Kind of the. The initial uh concerns that we have, again, with, when you take all the lots being over ten acres. Um, and further restricting to only one, one well per lot and the additional uh requirements on the usage of, of that water. Um, it, it does significantly alter kind of what the potential impacts are. Um, you know, not just from an overall drawdown to uh, to Commissioner White's uh, um. Point, um, but also uh just kind of from an overall cumulative impact that we're certainly uh concerned with. One of the bigger issues that we've, we've, we do have some concerns about in that area. Um, is quality. Um, and, and he mentioned, you know, one well was, you know. Nice, clear, clean water. The other one had some sulfides. Um, when you start getting into some of those hydrogen sulfides, manganese, iron issues. Um, you know, treating that water on an individual household basis. Becomes very cost prohibitive and. Arguably is, is not really workable on an individual household basis. There's tons of ways to get around that and to work it. But again, the purpose, at least for our point in this process, is at least making sure that. You, the court, are aware of those issues, the developers are aware of those issues, and most importantly, whoever's going to ultimately be buying those lots and developing and growing those lots. Is, is aware of those issues. Um, with the wells that they have in place, um, and already drilled. You know, they, they do certainly have a lot of localized information to add in to, uh. If they're going. Down the path of an alternative source, uh, or alternative method, I'm sorry. Um, to provide and, and kind of give more localized information, um, than the. Two previous uh subdivisions that we've been discussing. Um. But they're also, you know, kind of also kind of identifying some of the other alternatives that are, you know, at least available, again, not getting into the cost, you know, to. Uh, Commissioner Doggett's uh point, that they, there is water available from water supplies either through Walker County Sud and or the city with. Being within their current CCN as options. Um, you know, not, not that they have to, but at least identifying that in a worst case scenario that. You can't get those individual quality concerns or don't desire to drill your own eight hundred foot well. That there is, you know, we've kind of gone through the gamut of identifying all of the possible solutions or resolutions to minimize those. Uh, those issues that we know on the front end.
Well, I know where I'm at.
David, I, I know these, you know, out there, the, the water is, uh. I just think, kind of, kind of squirrely. Y'all drilled these two wells pretty close together, you know, this is a big subdivision.
Oh, they're about, the, the idea of that is if they were necessary for future.
I understand. And, and, um. You know. I don't like it. I'll be real honest with you, but, um. At this point, I think I'm okay with it.
Yeah, we really don't have a, we don't have a, like a policy in place. We don't say, James is right across freeway, you have to go to him, or you have to go to the city or whatever. We don't have that, so. Barring that, I'm, um.
Well, I, I, I mean, like I said, I. I hope everything works out for, for residents who want to do anybody. Um, and. We'll just, um.
I don't like the word hope.
Yeah, well, I don't either, but that's, uh.
It needs to work out one way or the other. They need to have water.
That's the way it is everywhere, you know, I mean, uh. We didn't do any of this in Texas Grand Ranch. Of course, they applied for the, I mean, they.
They got their own well. Yeah, they got the well, they got the.
Um, a lot bigger subdivision, so, um.
Yeah.
You know, but, you know, uh. I know it takes a lot of money to do these studies. At some point, um. I'm probably pushing to have them done. Um, versus this variance that we keep coming back to.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but at this point, I'll, I'll make a motion, we accept the variance.
I'll second.
For the, it's the motion.
With the con.
With all the conditions you listed.
With continued, uh, everything is put on the plat.
It'll submit a report. It'll be based on the alternative analysis. Still have a letter from Bluebonnet, no objection. And then they're going to provide. That the lots are. Single family. Lot re-subdivisible.
Mm-hmm.
That's easier than some. And it's.
If that is. Also, single well per lot.
Right, residential.
Well, was that provided in a letter?
Is it providing the student restrictions document draft that has been submitted as part of the plat?
It'll be on the plat, so.
Clarify this residential, single bed residential. Uh, lot subdivisible, single well.
Yeah.
I can't vote for this. I'll just tell y'all upfront.
Yeah.
I think it's better than we get a policy in place.
Yes.
Policy guy.
Yeah, we are, we do have policy, we're just not going.
We have a policy, that's what he's asking.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, he's asking a various from the policy.
And like I said.
Yeah.
Statutorily, um.
Well, you keep putting enough straws in the ground and eventually you're gonna run out of water. It's just that the way it is, but.
I say names.
Statutorily, there's some guidance on its way down the.
It's. Yes, sir.
Uh. My name's George Fossen. And, um. Commissioner Kirkendall. Was familiar with, uh, our. House out there on Geordie Road, and all the people on Geordie Road, and that's. That, of course, is east and probably north of where this was. But there were people out there who had wells that were ran anywhere from a hundred to. Uh, two hundred fifty, three hundred feet. Some of them had terrible problems with sulfur, iron, and other things. We drilled, we drilled a well, our hundred acres out there. Uh, the first well ran down to three hundred fifty feet. But we had sixty parts of the Reagan iron and sulfide in that point. The driller never mentioned, I was gone when they drilled. They never mentioned to me the iron and sulfide, but it was awful. There was no way to treat that water. To get rid of that. Uh, we tried. We drilled another well. Hundred twenty feet. And it had great water. Finding that eight thousand gallons a day. Artesian overflow, because we were down, kind of down in the valley near.
You were.
But just want to say, this is a gamble.
Yeah.
For the people who are buying these lots. Some of them may get good water, others may not, and. I would recommend having a red hydrologist to study that. And look underneath and see if it predicts. What the water is, is gonna do.
Okay. Yeah, James, the wells that y'all dig, I mean, how deep are those wells?
Six hundred to. Twenty four hundred.
So I mean, y'all go down, y'all get in an octopus or something down there. There's got plenty of water in it.
Yeah.
Yeah, the wind swept downs one. It's probably the best one you got. How deep?
Yeah, it's twenty four hundred fifty.
I think it's a little bit deep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Makes two thousand gallons in there.
Well, anyway.
Make a motion.
I'm making a motion.
Do you second it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Alright, moving seconded all in favor, raise your right hand.
I'm opposed to that one.
All opposed. Motion passes. Thirty. Thirty-six. Discuss and take action on Garrett Hennings request for variance to section two eight five point three two. A seven of Tac thirty, chapter two eight five, onsite security facility regulations of Walker County for permit number twenty twenty-three dash oh one oh four. L D U League A eighteen, Townley Ranch Road.
Hmm. I'll try to summarize it the best possible. So the, the TCQ code requires a three inch minimum line size. Um. A single sink here. Laboratory home here, on these two connections. But the plumber had recommended that they, that this line size, the tree size. Will improve performance of those.
But the plumber had recommended that they, that this line size, the three inch size, will improve performance of those lines. They requested that this segment of line here, all the way to where you see this Y right here, be allowed to be a two inch line. Um, the two-way cleanout will be located here, and they would have some one directional cleanouts located at these two locations. Putting out the directing arrow. Variance request at its heart is that this, this line between this location and these two stub outs here and here be allowed to be a two inch line. That's the heart of the.
Let's say that's a three inch, the next one.
Yeah, it starts here and goes all the way down here. This one is three inch here. So the, the variance area would be this area from, from this connection to these two cleanouts right there.
And we got a sanitary and sound off on it too, correct?
You have a sanitary and supportive, the design, the guy who did the design, this is not the design, this exhibit was prepared by the owner.
Oh, yeah.
But, but we do have a.
Yeah, I mean, I read it last night. Yeah, it's awesome.
I did want to think the design and.
I mean, it seems like a pretty my, a two inch pipe is a small pipe. This is just a, it's a, it's a small pipe and I hate to get away from their recommended sizes. It's not that much three inch pipe to at least mimic what was next, the other one, just two inch out toward.
Trad- traditionally in homes, you run your, your main line under the slab.
Right.
As soon as it stubs out of the slab, it falls under T C U requirements.
Yeah.
So the one fixture count per the line size, the two inches, it would break size.
He's, he's correct. If, if this two inch line were inside the building, that could wall or something like that. It's, but because it falls out here, it falls under our two eighty-five regulations, that's a three inch move.
What do you have, a sink there and a laboratory?
Yes, sir, just a sink and a dishwasher on the first one, and then as it comes down the line, the laboratory is a two, two sink in, in the bathroom that ties in immediately, the three inch line.
And toilet in the top, roll this straight.
Yeah, sanitary and supportive, Bill.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, it's, it's, it's just builder buyer beware on that one there. I mean, like I say, it it doesn't seem like that much to take the three inch up to at least to that ninety. But they're willing to live with the risk. It's gonna be on them, oh, um.
The plumber's worried about self scouring of water when you go for one sink. Say, for instance, a garbage disposal, we were grinding up a limit or something, and a three inch line size, because T C U says when it stubs out, it should be three, but residential, if it were in the slab, you would traditionally run a two inch anyway because the solids or the water in a three inch line for one fixture count wouldn't have enough volume.
To push it through.
Of course.
Yeah, all right. All right, I'll make the motion to approve agenda item number thirty-six.
I'll say definitely, Bill.
Moving, saying, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries thirty-seven. Discuss and take action on Littlefield Realty LLC request for variance to onsite sewer facility regulations of Walker County and Relation Department number twenty twenty-three dash zero one one nine V Badello Survey eight four FM two thirty.
No, there's no matter. Okay, so this, uh, Mr.
Littlefield. Littlefield.
Yeah, Mr. Littlefield purchased the property, it had an existing, we had an existing with the conventional wastewater system installed. There's no permit on that system. Uh, we can't date the system necessarily. We can't date it back to be grandfathered. He's constructing a new home with a new wastewater system for the permitting process. He's looking at twelve months to get the new home constructed and viable. They're using existing structure and the existing system. Uh, you know, so I say system, it's not approved by us, uh, on the property. What he's asking for is essentially that, you know, we would delay any enforcement action to let him get the, as a fix, to let him get the new house and new system in, in place. Um, we don't have any known surfacing of wastewater at this time. Uh, but it's an unpermitted system, so it's not, not allowed to use. Um, well, you know, if I was, normally if I'm working with somebody and they're saying, hey, I've got a fix. Yeah, I'm putting a new system in, can, can you guys give me a month or two months or three weeks to get the new system in? You know, we would work with them, but, uh, twelve months is a fairly long period. So that's why for the commissioner's court, is the old system gonna be demolished or? Yeah, the, the proposal to us now is that the old system and the old, uh, structure, I think, are going away. System certainly. Uh, yeah.
That's you again.
That's me again.
It's kind of a weird one.
It is.
This might be the first one of these I think that's wrong.
It is. And I, I mean, I'm not, I, I, I'm kinda like you, he brought up, I'm working on this, that I'm gonna bridge this one over here, but it's like we talked before, when we allow people to use unpermitted facilities, we don't go back in ninety days and walk up in the yard and, and, and see how it's doing. So that's, maybe that's another policy day coming down the road.
Well, and, and if, and if, if, if you wanna play some contingency, that, you know, um, if he has the, the.
Get up, son of a gun, look at it.
Forget the system.
Yeah.
Make sure what we did.
Yeah. All right, so my motion is gonna be go ahead and approve the number thirty-seven with the, with the variance, with the stipulation that I'll give me a timeframe to have sanitary and go, hey, they wanna go next one.
When have already looked at?
I could do generally within two months.
Two months, within sixty days.
Yeah, one's already looked at.
Well, he's looked at it by walking up and looking, looking on the ground.
He could provide, he could provide a setback, um, letter.
Yeah, I'd like for somebody to go look at it sixty days after they move in, but we don't, if Wendell looked at it before a drop of water ever went through it, the old one, it may have been sitting for ten years, we don't know. So telling that, that's gonna be my thing, approve the variance, but with the, with the sanitary and follow up within sixty days.
Do our standard.
And provide. Yeah, that one there.
I'm, I'm assuming the only reason they won't use is just.
To build construction.
Right, that's it.
I mean, the, the, the proposal is not for continued use. The proposal is that, that we, that our other option is to start writing citations and going after them.
I don't wanna do that.
While they're building the house and we just, so.
I, I don't really care about that, because they might, he might, they might change their mind or within that have to come back and get it re-permitted. So I don't, I don't wanna say you have to repair it out of the ground, because they might say, hey, we're gonna, we'll go through the permit process and get it brought up, because I wanna keep the bunkhouse, but I do want somebody to go by there within a couple of months after they move in and say, hey, it's, it's not spilling out on the ground.
Allow us to be twelve months to come into, to come under compliance with the two eighty-five.
Yeah.
Yeah, but Bill, I mean, we got people sort of running on talking down everywhere right now. We don't do nothing about that.
We need to go find it. Find it. You go find it.
How big, how big a piece of it?
We don't know about it.
So they got twenty-two acres and, you know.
So it's track number.
They gonna use this temporary?
Yeah, I'm good with them using it. I got no problem with it temporary at all. I'm just saying, I wanna go buy it after they, because they don't know if it's gonna work either. They bought the, they bought the tract, they bought the bunkhouse, it's got a sewer system, they think it's gonna work and it might work fine, and if.
It might work better than the new one you're gonna put in with all the pumps and all that.
It might very well.
So the, the, the twelve months coming to compliance with the two eighty-five code doesn't waver in the system. Doesn't allow for continued use.
Right.
Doesn't bother it. It's just allowing twelve months for compliance. They, they would have to monitor the system for value.
Yeah. That's what we're at.
That's your motion?
Yeah, that.
Twelve months to come in compliance.
Yeah, so with that, I mean, we already have one approved of variance, within sixty days of follow-up, twelve months to come in compliance. That's the motion, so.
And we're gonna make a spin on another sanitary and report.
Well, if Wendell, if Wendell's not built side, it may just be a graphic. Because I would, I would present.
Not yet, maybe we did.
Yes, I've been, been a working person.
Yeah. Well, you got a second, Jim.
Moving, seconded, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries thirty-eight. Discuss and take action on Jacob Softner, request for variance to onsite sewer facility regulations of Walker County and Relations Department number twenty twenty-three dash oh two oh seven, T J Morehead Survey A dash three six five. Orange Jacob.
Application.
So, uh, this is the owner who's with us today, and so on this system, you have, he purchased a building that didn't want it. Had a conventional system hooked up to one side of it. He's looking at remodeling and adding on to the other side and adding another system. When he came into apply for his permit, we have no permit on the existing structure or the existing system at all. Uh, it was put in, as far as we can tell, well into the permitting requirements, okay? Um, it's kind of back off the road, it's, um, uh, a large acreage tract. Um, his proposal today is allow the other system to play as it is. The mission system looks like, uh, based on what they're assuming does, maybe a single line. Um, he, he was putting a new system in, uh, on the other side of the building. Uh, this is on the, uh, opposite end of the building, serves the, the quarters that are there now. Um, he's asking to leave that one in place, only install the new system to handle the new side, leave the old side connected to the old wastewater system, but I have, again, no reason to believe it's grandfathered at all. Uh, in, in many cases, the court allows continued use when we're trying to, or in the gray area, trying to figure out where this grandfathered, and those are really grandfather determinations, not waiver of permanent determination. I don't know what the state, uh, would say about the court waiving, uh, a permit altogether. I've got some questions in, but I don't think. So he's here to answer questions, knows more of the detail than probably I do.
Okay.
I don't have any questions.
I don't, uh, like I said, Jacob's gonna build a new extension over the house and, uh, he's got, kind of, Bonnie, look at this.
Yeah, the question really is the, we waver it to allow it to be, can, continue to be connected the way it is now, or if not, you'll have to tie it into the new system. And, and, which being on opposite sides of the structure, probably. Some fun things on the construction side.
What you thought, Stan?
Well, I mean, he's got a letter from sanitary, so he's working system. I know, I don't remember when that phone was put in. I remember when they built the barn, the many mail player, but like Andy said, and I'd said it was in the early nineties, I would say, or around that. Yeah, I mean, it's been there a long time, but it was not prior to them being grandfathered, I know that for sure, so.
Yeah, my end are kind of tied. The state doesn't address, you know, really waiver or permit, it allows the county to grant variances. Um, it has certain variances that are dealt with setbacks, setback variances gonna be granted if there's no other alternative. I think that they've looked at the setback requirements, uh, he's had sanitary and look at that, so, um, I've never had a grant of no permit before in a variance. I don't know how T C people react, I just want to tell before.
Well, and you said you had some, you, you, you're waiting on a response from them.
I mean, I, I can get a response, I think, you, you don't ever know.
Yeah.
I think I can get a response from them, but, uh, at the end of the day, it may be, we don't think you should.
Yeah.
Which is very different than you can.
Yeah. Well, I guess, if, if we do hear back from them, once we hear back from them, then that may change my mind. At this point, I'm, I'm with it, so, um, I'll make the motion to accept the variance. So I don't refer you.
Moving, saying, all in favor, raise your hand.
I'm gonna vote, I, I just gotta vote against.
That's okay. All opposed, raise your hand.
Thank you.
There you go. Motion passes four to one. I'm thirty-nine. Thank you, Jacob. Discuss, discuss and take action on Chad Gerlick, request for variance to onsite sewer facility regulations of Walker County and Relations Department number twenty twenty-three dash zero one three five, lot eleven, section one of Harman Ranch, Ranch View Drive.
So on this one, essentially, there's a usage chart, it's under regulation. I mean, the wastewater regulations, using chart requires based on number of bedrooms, square foot, particular gallons per day of treatment capacity be used. Um, it's a ladder that's based on both square footage and the number of bedrooms. The proposal is for two homes. One of it would be four hundred eighty gallons on the ladder, one of which would be three hundred sixty gallons on the ladder. They're asking for both homes to be allowed to use three hundred sixty gallon, which is a three bedroom. Uh, that's still, I'm gonna repeat, one of the homes, getting that would push it up to the next category, and then they wouldn't be able to use eight hundred gallon per day treatment. What they're trying to do is use an eight hundred gallon per day unit instead of bumping up to a thousand. Um, so that's, that's essentially it. They're asking for a reduction in the treatment capacity for this, for the system, based on their intended use of the system. Uh, again, what T C Q tries to anticipate with their bedrooms and their square footage is the number of people that are gonna be in the home on a regular basis, and the number of people that are gonna be visiting them. They kind of have a basic assumption that if you have a two bedroom house, it's twenty thousand square feet, you do a lot of entertaining. Right? And so they, they have a ladder that's based on both things, square footage and, and number of bedrooms.
It does say in there too, that a lot of it is on the back porch.
Yeah, for any, any area that's part of the structure that's enclosed counts for this square footage.
So, I mean, that's in the sanitary and report.
So that's, that's the, that's the only verdict here. Well, the setback variance, it is a, it is a different capacity variance. I will tell you, I, before this chart, they used to write everything on the, on the gallons per day. Then they started this chart, which increases your treatment size, it doesn't increase your disposal.
I can barely read this, but it says, my concern is the maximum occupants of the house and apartment will not be able to adequately feed a thousand gallons, whatever the system, in, in, in its septic state. So basically, I mean, he thinks it wouldn't work.
Yeah, he, he thinks it'll work. He thinks that the feed of the system would not keep up with.
Yeah.
I don't have any comment.
Too big, and I understand what he's saying, but, um, you know, when you have no feed, that's an issue, um,
depending on how much you wanna work, I guess, can be an issue. I don't know that they're in that state yet, but, but we do have the support from the state. In the backup.
So, that's your pressing?
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm gonna make a motion to approve it. The variance, uh, follow back on the sanitary and report, but.
I'll second it. Moving, seconded, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries.
We, we got you, Jason.
Yes, I'm, I'm getting active. All right, citizens input, we got, uh, Rebecca, well, I got a bunch of lines for the sandal.
Rebecca. Philip, whoever's coming. Miss Pat, you talking to us today?
Morning.
Great, this will.
Good morning, good morning.
It's still morning, right?
Yep. It's probably still morning.
I'm Rebecca Standifer. I'm the president of the T G R H O A, the O A T. Um, we received the neighborhood in this, January of this year. Um, this is Scotty Dog, that's what we'll call it, the Scotty Dog of T G R. We're here today just to kind of introduce ourselves. I know you guys know who we are as far as a neighborhood and the roads. We've had a nice meeting with Mr. White regarding our roads and erosion and things that are going on in the neighborhood. We wanted to talk about a little bit about what our tax base is as it currently sits. Our tax base is about seven million dollars as we sit for the twenty twenty-three. In ten years, we'll be about thirty-four million dollars to Walker County. Some of the things that we're paying attention to is, on page three, we've kind of talked about some of the infrastructure items, um, that we are concerned about. We kind of go from green to yellow. One of the biggest ones for us is roads and ditches, and they're having the appropriate equipment to serve the road. I need to, I need to talk about roads, it's pretty ironic based on that. But the roads in our neighborhood, we have forty miles of roads in the neighborhood, and that's a lot of roads. It's a lot of, um, erosion that's occurred. We have erosion in the neighborhood that's two feet deep, um, in sixty places. Um, section fifteen, the roads haven't been taken. Um, section fifteen, the roads haven't been taken yet. Um, there's. The road, I think the bridge has to be accepted, and then the roads get accepted. So we saw this section that's not even been accepted. Um, law enforcement, we're okay. Fire response, we're okay. Water, we're having some water issues in our neighborhood. Um, we're serving the water. I know that has nothing to do with you, but just.
Yeah, but would y'all expand on it? If you go over your time, maybe I'll ask you a little bit more, because water's an issue in the county as you went a while ago.
So we are on two different systems. One is city, and then one is Quadvest. So. The Quadvest system, we're having trouble with water getting to the homes. So. In the mornings, if a bunch of sprinters are going off, we have people that have less than ten P S I. And the homes are still being built in that area. Um, Quadvest is going to be doing some additions, but we're not sure it's enough. Um, we're not sure it's enough with the number of homes that are there. Um, Huntsville does the other side of the water, and the bills are extremely high. If you ask our neighbors. Um, their water bills are two, three hundred dollars. So their water bills are pretty big. Um, the Quadvest side are not, but we're having water issues. So getting the water to the homes. So it's something that the board is focused on right now, is trying to make sure that the improvements are being made to the plant. Are enough to support the possible six hundred homes that will be in there. We're, um. Eighteen hundred and thirty-six lots, fifteen hundred and eighty-six owners. Um, we have currently three hundred and ninety-five homes. Um, we have almost four hundred that, when you count those that are in construction, we're growing at about a hundred homes a year. Um, give or take. So the infrastructure items are gonna matter whether our neighborhood survives. So we're very hopeful on those. Um, internet and telecommunications, we have a lot of outages, power outages, you know, I think that's part of living in the forest. We kind of knew that one. That some of that would be the case. Um, natural gas, there's a lot of rain on our, our thing, but what we really wanted to know from the county is what we can do to help you. And kind of who we are, what we are, what we have coming. Um, what can you do to help us? Work as a team. Um, I think our philosophy is very team oriented. Um, the boards is anyway, um, in the neighborhood. Um, so.
Okay.
Any questions?
Well, a, at this time, I mean, it's y'all's time really to talk to us, and we shouldn't be interacting with y'all at all.
Yeah, we can't respond.
Yeah, I mean, the turning back there will shut me down pretty.
Yeah. You have any questions?
Yeah, I mean, y'all, y'all, y'all been to the office.
We have, yeah. We really appreciate you giving us the time to talk, and then at least explaining how the budgets work, you know. Three to four hundred per mile a road for taking care of the roads. We have a lot of roads in our neighborhood. When that budget goes really quick, if you have any issues, um, so we understand, we're working with you, we. Getting, giving you a piece of our properties, state products, um, so that it means that the repair is done a little faster. So we're on your side. We're a team. You know, we look at this as a team.
I think the one. There was, we do see the revenues, uh, coming up to the thirty-four million over the next ten years. Um, and some of the issues we're starting to see, we just want to make sure we're communicating and learning what we have. You know, the thirty-four million. Something has come back into hoping that the equipment we need, they maintain the roads you asked us to build, some of the roads weren't built right. We love the fact that. Ditches, I mean, we have ditched roads in some places, six to eight feet. I mean, there's some that sort of, that has to be done. Uh, get that under control. And then, uh, obviously, we'll continue to do more with fire leases. We get.
Yeah.
As we grow.
But we do, uh. And we've had situations where all walk roads out of T G R have been flooded at some point, and you can't. So there is an issue with, and so I'm talking about, how do we have? Some kind of road that doesn't flood.
Yeah. Okay, no, I'm gonna just be brief, but nothing in the subdivision other than different that flooded, is that correct? Yeah, but.
Right, the other two places were thirteen seventy-four, which stopped you from going to Huntsville or out from there.
Okay. All right, appreciate you.
They're the only speakers?
Yeah.
Anybody else? That it?
All right, we're gonna start on budget workshop.
Well, you know, we need five minutes.
Any five, we're gonna take five minutes at ten thirty-two.
It's ten thirty-seven.
We're back from recess to work on budget workshop.
Okay, I thought we would start with the, the tax rate. Uh, we went over in the, the regular session. Calculated prices were, and then I wanted to go through the rates with you and show you. The impact of, um, the levy rates and the one and a half that was talked about. Uh, and how much money, uh, the rates are generating that's not already included in the budget. So, uh, just to recap, current rate, the forty-four point nine oh. The no new revenue rate, forty forty-seven, that's a decrease of four point four three in the rate. The rate that court has been talking about, based on our preliminary estimates, that to fund. The items that, uh. Court had reached the consensus to fund within the one and a half cents rate, that rate would be four point. Uh, four, four one point nine seven, uh, that would generate approximately seven hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. More than what we've got in the budget right now. Uh, if you went with a one cent versus a one and a half cent rate increase, that would generate about. Four hundred and fifty-eight thousand more than what's in our budget now. And then if you went with a half a cent, uh, it would generate a hundred and sixty-nine thousand. So where we were in the original consensus that quarter prudent. Uh, was a five percent versus a four percent. If you go to five or do an equivalent across the board, that would be about six hundred dollars a person. That would cost two hundred and forty thousand. The longevity income is hundred and twenty-five thousand. The I T analyst would run about eighty-two thousand. And one that I've added that really wasn't discussed, but that's, um, a bit of a concern to me is that. In the past several years, including the current year, we've been moving about eighty thousand dollars in the sheriff's budget. Every year just to cover the cost of fuel. And then this year with adding the four deputies, there was zero dollars added for operating cost for those four deputies. So this, I think, is, uh, definitely will be, uh, a minimum of this amount. Short, uh, shortfall in operations, which would need to be funded with, uh, contingency during the year. And the other position that was discussed was the jail transport position. This one was, uh, talked about by court, the hundred and twenty-five that's going into jail, but they would have the option. Of how they spent that money, but these were the items that were not able to be funded within the revenues. That we were projecting in our early proposed. So just wanted to lay these out on the table and get some guidance as to. What the court is thinking with these new numbers now available. Yeah, I want to sard that a minute.
So if we keep seven and a half, Ms. Patricia, that leaves you seven hundred and forty-seven thousand to play with, right?
For the court to allocate to the, the need that they're thinking. Now, what that would do. It could allow you to, uh, if. Should you choose something and these items in the consensus not funded. It would also allow you to put aside that money, save that money. For, uh, going into next year's budget. It would be part of, uh, the money for E M S, should you. Go with that, uh, extra crew, uh, it would also be a positive starting point for next year's. Budget as far as allocations in next year's budget. Wow, a contingency, what what.
Yeah.
Thinks that money should be used for.
Obviously, good point, and I didn't think about it, the the. Added expense for the uh for deputy. I mean, if we hadn't added any fuel or anything for them.
Nothing.
Nothing, then we.
Uniform.
Obviously got to do something there. So so it's definitely something we need to consider.
And that was, I think eighty was a good number for that.
And and eighty is what we had to put in this year and to make that a little bit more of a concern uh. Uh lately, what I'm reading is fuel is on the uptick again. And certainly don't expect uh in next year's budget, we'll be spending less than we did this year. And we know when this year, especially adding more miles, uh that will be. Certainly don't expect to spend less.
Yeah, it jumped thirty cents on the weekend.
Oh, yeah.
You know.
Well, I guess, Patricia, to uh to fund all the things that we all agreed on, how much of that sent there?
Uh, you could, if you not to, if you didn't fund everything, to fund the all the list I read at. Out at you is six hundred and twelve thousand dollars.
Yes, seven.
And you've got seven forty seven if you go with the. Uh, cent and a half increase. Um, and that would leave you funding uh going into next year's budget to apply toward your uh EMS uh. Growth, growth of service. If you, you know, if you went with the one cent, then you could. If you chose um fund several of these items, but not all of them. One, one thing and I I it does concern me with only having two people in I T. Um, one gets sick or Dan gets sick or even tries to take a vacation. Um, we, we don't have anyone else, so I think it's critical that. We focus on filling that position. Uh, Dan's concern is with that position, getting the person he's wanting there. This I T analyst position is uh. Meets a lot of the needs, allows for training on things, you know, at a. Uh, at what's hope hopefully of a more marketable position, so that one's uh. That one's a concern, not having another person in that position is a concern.
I don't disagree with that at all. I think we need to get somebody in there.
When are we, so when are we looking at? Wouldn't say that, so that's their third one, is it this level right here?
We have one that's between Dan and Jason.
Yeah.
What's that pay scale?
We don't, I mean, this I T, I think it's an I T analyst too, I didn't put the two on there. But that is a position that's currently between Jason and Dan, so this is that uh middle position.
And he's still got one that's open, right?
And we still have that long term opening uh for the.
Yeah, we will have interviews next week.
Yeah, we're looking to fill that one pretty quick, so. We let him go with, I I almost let him try to go with three for a while and then. See next year again, if he's going on two, and I agree a hundred percent with your thoughts of.
Yeah.
Unless the guy don't show up one day.
I I don't mind putting the money there, but I still have heartburn. Trying to give him two positions basically at all.
I do too.
We we are, we are having interviews next week, I will. Put a Bible up here, one way or the other, we're having interviews.
If somebody shows up.
Me and Dan have talked and we are holding interviews.
And one of Dan's concerns that he expressed is that if he fills that position. Uh, with qualifications less than what he's looking for in that positions, then he's lost it. Um, and so frankly, it was kind of his logic in asking for this, he wanted to be able to look for. This position and still not lose his uh second.
Well, if you hadn't filled it, you don't need to keep, I just got attitude of that.
You're not getting argument.
We've had twenty, how many was it that applied? Twenty-two or twenty-four people have applied.
Yeah, has he interviewed anybody?
Next week.
Next week.
See, I could almost. No matter, me and Bill are holding interviews. Yes.
I think on this.
I told Dan that, well.
I think on this position here, I'd be more comfortable with letting him go with the three that he's gonna have. And set aside some money for like some contract support.
We already got that.
So if that's there.
Tyler's.
Yeah, so so if we have the money there, then I would almost like to try that first. If and see if they can do three. And if they can't handle it with three, say, okay, is it another body or is it a contractor support firm that comes in and and helps us? On a contract basis, you know, and on here and there on some things, I think there's. I hate just like, like, like Russ, I hate to throw two bodies at somebody.
I don't mind putting the money out there, I just don't want to give it to them.
I don't even want to put it out there.
But but I mean, if if he needs a position for next year and we get the chance to fund it now, then fund it. You know, but don't give him the money, but put it stashed somewhere, Mr. Patricia. They may come back next year needing another person. But, you know, uh, because if not, it's gonna be gone somewhere else and and next year we'll be back wanting another person. Well, that's why you won't.
Yeah, and in our I T assessment, it basically is saying in in the. The next five year, six year period, we're needing three additional positions over what we've got budgeted. Um, but right now, our critical need is at least a person. At in that department.
Well, you have to interview to be able to hire somebody. That's happening next week.
Yeah, that's my thoughts, I think we give, I think we get somebody in the seat, let him go with three. Bring a forceful in behind, I think, I don't know, it might even overwhelm me to have two people show up and say, what do we do, because. I think that's problem, I like, I like idea of just one, whether we. Do, I I'm all for sticking for the penny and a half, we we've already took the hit on that, we've said it out loud, it's out there. And um if we can put ourselves in position to make improvements, like I said, we talked about the EMS. We know, we know a crew is coming, we see it coming. And um whether we set some of this aside or not, or whatever, but it's the um. It's that's coming, we know we need more sheriff deputies, that's coming. We're gonna need at some point, we might need this transfer, so I think we gave him four deputies, I don't know if we need a transfer.
You know, I talked to him the other day after a bill bond meeting, and so he's got one that's retired. And you you know, y'all see the bill pay, um, they're traveling all over the place, getting people up. You know, and and uh what happens in Quentin maybe contest this is, is you know. D hard's getting stuck bringing people up here himself, you know, because he doesn't have the help. Um, so I I don't know, you know.
And you, he's using jailers, I mean, he's.
He's pulling, he's pulling jailers out of jail to to use transport deputies, so, you know.
I think we're there.
So you think he needs the guy, you think he needs? Okay, if you talk to him, then I'm cool with that, yeah.
I I mean, Quentin, I mean, y'all, y'all know what the 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 rate is, the trial rate, and how many people y'all are moving, they're. They're bringing them all up here, you know, um.
It's it's the docket days that when they bring them up.
Yes.
The examine actually increased the number of docket. It's every now that we get a special.
Yeah.
Files are at the same rate, docket days are at the same rate. Um, we don't, our office does not request. The transport deputies go out of state to get people up on misdemeanors. We only do that on felonies. And we don't do all of them, those have a screening process, sometimes we don't make them go, but. It does seem like lately that they're going along.
And you know, I I mentioned it when he was here asking for the transfer guy, and I I like the idea of. At least looking into it, and maybe that's what we do with the money this year. Looking into having a facility out there at the jail where they can go get arraigned or whatever right there, because basically they just need a room with a TV. Secure in a private room for them and their attorney, that's pretty much all they need.
And to, and I can speak to that, actually, uh, we. Unless they're coming to plea, our office doesn't want them there.
Yeah.
It's, but many times the defense attorneys are requesting that their guy be brought over.
Yeah.
If 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 they're not coming over for a plea, then I don't know why the defense attorney can't go see him in the jail. And so, but we're seeing a whole lot of people coming over, I do know that uh the uh the video system, I think it works fine, but some of the judges are not thrilled with it. And I think part of that is because sometimes that's the only time that they know that the defense attorney is gonna sit down and talk. I'm gonna bash the defense attorney, she's gonna do it.
Do it.
If they would go to the jail and meet with their clients there. That would save the need to bring all these, all their defendants to, you know. They transport all these people in, if we're not pleading, we don't need them in the courtroom, but.
Yeah, well, I I know this is getting off base, Quentin, so, but but so explain this to me, so. We we get, we're probably getting way off base, that's all right. Um, when when we call people in for a jury trial. Why is there so many of them that actually show up and then all of a sudden we get up here and the the defendant pleads out? And we've done called in all of them. I I I mean, we're taking out of people's lives, you you know, to come do their service to the county. And like I said, it it just the question come up, it's come up before and and now it's come up.
It's an expense, besides the expenses, the time demand on the citizens to come up, um. That is an extremely complicated scenario, uh, I'll be a little.
We'll talk about it later.
I had a meeting the other day with a couple of our judges, and the part of the problem is that uh. I think in a simplistic world, everybody looks at the end, like somehow or another, we could. We can manage that situation. And in reality, again, the defense attorneys have a lot to do with that, but. We have, I personally, with my boss's approval, have implemented some. Standards that we're trying to use, essentially if they call the jury in, we want to trot. But.
I just want it all.
Circumstances where it might not happen, but that isn't because we weren't ready. And it isn't, you know, it is what it is, and if if at all possible, of what we're striving for is. Everything on the docket is planned, we're trying to let the court know that early enough to cancel the jury.
Yeah.
But sometimes, again, we're at the mercy of the defense attorneys. And when the defense attorney tells me that his client, maybe it's not the defense attorney, it's his client. When he tells me that his client has finally seen the light, it might be because of the room full of jurors.
It's not, it's not real until they get there with a jury.
Seen the light and they're ready to take the deal and the deal is justice and it's the right thing. I don't want to risk a jury, it might, but I'm not, we're not giving it away, that's one thing we've changed, we're not gonna give a case away, we're not gonna. Redebate on trial day, because that's so.
Yeah.
Just, and that's a problem.
Yeah, well, it should be.
Point where there's always something we've got ready to go, but we we might be ready, but the defense attorney says, I'm not ready to say a judge. Judges can't, right, they complain all day long, but they know darn well what the law says and they're gonna give them. Attorney gets continuance and there's not gonna be a trial. And everybody likes to point at us.
Yeah, well, I'm not, I'm not pointing fingers, I'm not pointing fingers, I just, I hear about it from people that actually take the time to show up. And I I know we're getting way off base on this and I'm sorry.
Well, it's an expense, and that's another one of those things, transport deputies, we're bringing the guy out, he's in jail.
Yeah.
Right, so.
One more question about the the attorneys, the defense attorneys that are not going to the jail. We pay those guys. If if we got one or two that's consistently not doing his due diligence by going to the jail. Uh, can we delete them from our list?
You have absolutely no better.
Thank you.
Only the judges, and and to be fair, I I I know all three judges are constantly trying to address.
Right.
And it is, it is what it is, uh, and a lot of times they do go meet with them, and then other times they miss and. I I guess my thing is, I don't know why we're paying to transport the guys over when there's not a plea actually agreed to, but. It has been, it's a common occurrence where we don't have a preset plea agreement. And because the guy gets brought over, the defense attorney meets with them and. Then they come tell shell, we'll take the plea, we'll take the plea bargain. So we scramble and get the paperwork done, which makes the folks in probation mad at us, and again, it's really not us, it's.
Yeah.
It's a last minute deal, but.
So is there a way to fix that?
The judges, the judges regularly implement. Procedures and send out emails and scold from the bench and they're doing all these various things that, you know.
Yeah. At some point, it is what it is, but well, you know, at at some point, they're doing all they can do to you and.
Again, like you said, it's extremely, there are so many variables that are involved and and I, if I, and I'm coming across being harsh on the defense attorneys, they deserve it. But their clients are the ones who say, yeah, I'm gonna sign that paper or not, and sometimes their clients, you gotta. Verbiably hold their feet to the fire, they gotta see a room full of people that are getting ready to decide their fate, and they're like, okay, yeah, I'm gonna take that.
Yeah.
You know, so, but we are, we are trying, we built in a system and we're still working our way through the kinks where. We we always hold the case back, and this is gonna go to trial.
Yeah.
So if they come to jury and they plead out, then maybe charged them. The jury come in the first place.
Can't do that.
I think it's, it's not just, it's, to me, it's got like three problems with it, you know, one is. We unload a a van full of inmates right on the downtown square. And they're wearing nice bright orange and they're all chained together, so that's our downtown square is.
Well, maybe it's a pretty good wake up call, Bill.
Well, not not for them. But then, they also, you know, they walk, they walk from the curb into our courthouse, and some of these people have a lot of people mad at them. You know, they, some of these people have done things, people, their family members might want to square the deal a little bit, so there's. We we can't protect them from there, we have a guy walking with them, but.
I'll comment on that.
And then when they get it, and then when they get inside.
I'm okay with it.
You know, we can't guarantee the protection of the people around them, you know, because some of these people, I mean, the world's full of bad people. And that's some bad, that's three strikes to me that we could eliminate by saying, don't come here, you know, do it out there.
And I will say this, if if it's nothing within an arraignment. Uh, if they're in jail, the arraignments are done on the video system. It it's the, it's when they're on their second or third pre-trial, or they're on the docket call, they're they're coming over. And sometimes, again, we never request to bring an inmate unless we have a agreed. Plea bargain we need to sign paperwork on. The defense attorneys regularly request from the court coordinator to bring people over.
Yeah.
It may be because they think that we're gonna get a plea deal done, or it may be because they want to meet with their client.
Is that their job to tell them who to bring over, the defense attorney?
It it is their job to tell them to bring over their client if there's a plea.
All right.
So. That's kind of, you know, if there's not a plea deal, then why do you got coming over? Maybe says the guy tried to the jail, it might result in a plea, so I can't, I really want to stop it, but.
Yeah.
It does explain why there are so many. Transport deputies are in short supply occasion.
Okay.
Thank you, Clint. Sorry about that, Patricia.
Not, it's good.
Yeah, we got, we sidetracked.
Danny got us off.
Good.
It's okay, Dan.
Definitely, yeah, it's something to be concerned about, I mean, we're wasting people's time here.
Yeah, we are, you know, yeah. So on your list over here about all these things, um. I I just, I kind of like the way, kind of like the way it looks and with with Commissioner Gergen doll's idea of just. Putting a placeholder for that eighty two thousand, stick it over. Contingency over there, just move it over there, and then that still theoretically leaves us. A hundred thousand or so, um. That will roll into our fund balance for next year to make decisions on with that. And it's in the, this is, that's, and this is in the tax roll money, so it's always gonna be all there. Okay.
All right, so on um I T moved contingency, build in the funding for jail transport, is that the?
I think so, right? All right.
It's mine, anyhow.
So I've got one, two.
I'm okay with jail transport, we definitely need to.
Well, I mean, we give him a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars in overtime and and it's, you know, with the jail, you know. He said the other day, they're pretty close to fully staffed in the jail at the point, but, you know, uh. Still, the numbers, I mean, the numbers are up. I don't know how, that that hundred and twenty-three ain't gonna go very far, just put it that way.
He's governed what he can do and what he can't do out there, so.
Yeah.
There has to be so many people out there all the time, whether it's.
Per per inmate, yeah.
Yeah. We don't have any say so in that, that's just kind of what you have to do.
Yeah, so I had three.
What are you looking at, which one, Patricia?
Uh, jail transport.
I'm good with the jail transport, I'm not good with adding anything.
I'm good with the jail transport, but I'm not good with adding anything for. What's his name, Dan?
We got it over on the side.
What about contingency, well, that would just go into contingency.
Yeah, just allocate it over.
No, I'm not good with Dan at all.
Right now.
I wanna come to add the person that you.
No, there's no, there's no Dan.
Yeah, I'm not either, I.
Yeah, there's no Dan in this right now, Dan. We just.
Well, and 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 the money sits there and if Dan needs next year and we hadn't used it, then so be it and. You know, if he doesn't, then we'll do something else with it.
Yeah, he's gotta hire somebody. In more.
Yeah, we can't be adding the more until we get somebody on board.
That's, that's exactly how I feel, yeah.
I hope y'all all on board with that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I still don't, I need three, so I have three on transport.
Yep.
Uh, increase for the SO operating.
We're gonna have to do it.
It's right in our day.
We'll pay it out of contingency one.
Yeah.
You're on a.
Yeah, I think.
I I don't.
And I'm blouting here on this one.
Yeah.
Which one, Patricia?
On the longevity.
Oh, you got that one.
Is is longevity to the two hundred or two twenty, what is it, what is longevity?
The longevity is one twenty-five. Oh, and that's.
Two twenty-five.
From one seventy to two fifty.
To, okay. Um.
I didn't think we went that high, did we?
Not too big.
Uh, that's what was in the proposed budget, you can go anything, I mean, you can.
I think the budget was two twenty.
Or two twenty, yeah, it's a fifty increase, that was two twenty.
The two twenty.
You're right.
I think that's what that was. Um.
I was still a no on it, so.
Yeah, uh, but.
I'm not gonna get loaded.
But like I said, to me, and I can have said it when it, when we come up, this one here was. One of the most awkward things we did last year on the, was raising the longevity side of the world. Um, it 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 impacted a lot of longer term people and it's a, it's a big number, but it's not as big a number. Um, as reaching all four hundred or three hundred and ninety employees, how many we have, it doesn't touch all of them. So I'm, I don't necessarily need to go to two twenty, I think we went to two hundred from one seventy, that's still a significant increase. It's thirty bucks and we could. Um. And that would probably drop that down to what, a hundred or so from a hundred twenty-five? It's not a, not a huge number, but it's, um, it would be an increase to that and two hundred's a nice round number. So if I'm looking for proposal, that's what I would propose is to keep the longevity increase, but only to. Only to two hundred dollars a month, pretty, two hundred dollars per year.
Brandon.
I would go for that before I go for another percent on the.
I think we're talking about both. Just worried on this line here, the longevity.
So you're a one or the other. So, what I'm hearing.
Yeah, I'm I'm gonna just say no longevity. We just went from. Whatever it was, eighty bucks a year to a hundred and seventy, or I don't remember the numbers, but we just.
Where where we at? We still hold over four percent.
Uh, that's the next one you're going to discuss, um. The one percent, uh, would cost two hundred and forty thousand. Uh, there was a discussion of whether to do the one percent option of doing a flat. Uh, the, what would cost about the equivalent amount would be a six hundred dollar flat.
So six hundred flat for everybody getting across the board.
Mm-hmm, would cost about two forty, cost about the same as a one percent.
Maybe the old.
And then six hundred. Across the board.
Yeah, the four percent's already in the numbers, this is increasing the four to five or. Doing the four percent plus six hundred, uh, flat per full-time equivalent, so if you were part-time, you'd get a. A portion of that.
I kinda like that one, I kinda like that, that addresses the. In cost of living at a lower, at the lower pay rates too, you know, gallon of milk and a gallon of gas.
How about taking the four percent and making it flat? Just like you're doing this building, where where your top people are not getting all the money.
The, that is an option, of course, one thing that it does in the pay classification. But it does, you would increase every pay scale by that private account. And over time, that flattens your pay.
And you, and you fall behind.
Done the salary study.
Yeah, you do your study and if you don't increase it. And that's why I kinda like the mix here, I kinda like that, because eventually you're higher paid people. For whatever that number is, you start falling behind again, you're surrounding people, you're instead of four percent, you might be getting a two. And now you're starting to get back to where we worked so hard to get away from. For that, there's like.
Well, that, and and this, this moves your, your market value up across the board, right?
Yeah, every, uh, every market, uh, every number in the pay scale would be increased by seven sixty.
Yeah. Yeah, I like that one.
And y'all keep in mind, in insurance is going up, so those that have medical insurance that they can afford. Depending upon what they make, this may not even cover that increase.
Well, that's.
It will not, I think the number Amy gave us was closer to eight hundred, seven hundred, seven ninety-four for family coverage. Okay.
Okay. I like that.
FYI out there.
I like, I like adding the six hundred across the board, that gives you a good, a good base for everybody and then a percentage on top of that, I like that one.
Is that the consensus?
I don't think.
Patricia, I I don't have, I've forgotten to grab my book this morning, but I think last year's budget, we were. Uh, we used fifty-three percent of the budget. Or I can't remember the numbers, this year's budget, we're looking at around thirty percent left over of our budget. So tha- that's what kinda gives me pause on trying to raise taxes, I had a. I had an accountant tell me one time, if you're gonna tax the people, you need to spend the money. Right, you shouldn't tax the people and keep it in your coffers.
Yeah, one thing I'll, I'll tell you, and it's math, but by moving the. One point mi- nine million dollar, by not treating it as a transfer out of general fund. Then that reduced the expenditure budget. But it doesn't really produce, reduce the bottom line, but what it does do is when you do your division. You've got a smaller number in it, so mathematically, we would have the same fund balance. Uh, ma- I mean mathematically, we have the same money, but the percentage calculates now. Generally because you have less expenditures, because you moved it to a reduction of revenue.
Okay, so. In our, in our road bridge, which we have carried forward, and he's had of the, our budget last year is what, thirty-eight? Thirty-nine, I don't remember exactly, how much carry forward money we're gonna have?
In road bridge?
No, in in the entire county.
Um, let's go to your, you have your book.
Not today.
Okay.
I haven't.
All right. Would it be in one of these, nine million, one hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars? Now that's, when you say in every fundament county, this is general fund, the fund that could be allocated. You've got a lot of money in your, um, legislative designated funds. You've got a lot of money there, but you, you don't, you as the court, you can't control those expenditures. So this is the money that's available for allocation by the court.
That includes the five million?
Uh, no, that does not include the projects fund, this is just general fund.
In that nine million, we can't, I'm just asking, I'm the new guy on court. In that nine million dollars, if we're not gonna spend, there's not a budget, uh, I don't. We can't get to that. What they're wanting to do out of the no new revenue rate and we're gonna have nine million left over, I guess that's my point.
If you, yeah, I mean, yes, you can get to it, it's in the bank. Uh, you can get to it, but what it's doing is you are paying for these ongoing costs with one time.
And that don't work.
You're nine million.
It's not nine million of tax roll left, right?
It's not million of, nine million of tax.
It's not.
This is everything.
It's our reserve, basically.
History of county, money that's been collected basically over budget that's not been spent.
We're not collecting thirty million and only spending twenty-one.
Okay.
No. Now, of the tax rate.
That's saving.
Allocating one hundred percent, or you're allocating ninety-six point five percent. Of that money. This is the money, it it's cash flow money, this is the money that funds the four and six. Or allows us to have the cash for the four and six million dollar grants. It's the money that carries us through and you collect a lot of your money at the front of the year and then this, this is cash flow. Emergency type money.
And it needs to be there.
It does need to be.
Be there, otherwise we can't do these grants or any of that stuff.
The percentage, this twenty-nine percent is higher than the normally, money we normally see. Uh, if you look, well, you can't look. Uh, uh, last year.
He's got a book now.
Oh, you have a book now, all right, so I'm on page three of general fund. If you look under the column, original budget, twenty-two, twenty-three. All right, at the end of this budget we're in right now, we budgeted to have eight million, five hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. And that percentage was twenty-two point two-nine. Right, uh, this year, we are going to have about six hundred thousand more. And that percentage is twenty-nine thirteen, but it's because the expenditures decrease. If you look in twenty-twenty-two, the expenditures were thirty-seven million. And this year, they're thirty-one million, but it's because of the accounting treatment of some of the expenses. Money wise, we're really on target with what we historically have. Percentage wise, the computations are a bigger percentage.
Yeah, without it though, Brandon, we couldn't do these grants and stuff and pay for all that stuff, you gotta.
Sam, but some, somewhere you got some fund balance sitting there somewhere, I don't know exactly where in this book, we got what, twenty-eight million dollars in fund balance? Or did I read that, I may have the number wrong, we got fund balance somewhere sitting there.
Yeah, no, we have fund balance.
So we don't do any new tax, we're a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars in the whole one budget.
Yeah, if you do the, um, yeah, we would need to cut the budget by a hundred and twenty-three thousand.
Yeah.
All right, if you adopt the rate that you've been discussing, you would have seven hundred and forty-seven thousand. If you drop that down to one percent, you would have four hundred and fifty-eight thousand, and if you went with a half a cent. You would have a hundred and sixty-nine thousand to allocate.
Right. Yep. And we used to do the no new revenue or the effective rate, and what we found out was we couldn't pay our people. There were no merit increases, equipment got old. So we started keeping a penny, penny and a half, and we've made some amazing improvements in the last three or four years. So.
Four years, I don't know.
Three. Do what?
We were.
No new revenue, right? We already got four percent in there, right?
But we're a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars shut upside down.
You would need to reduce it by the hundred and twenty-three thousand.
Yeah. And that's what we used to do, and you see what it costs us to catch back up. Last year, and what, three percent just for public safety to catch back up. Three, not three percent, three cents on the tax rolls, just to catch back up.
Yeah, we can, in my opinion, we can't let that back up. No, it's, we're retaining them now.
And it goes to fifty-one, so, I mean, it all plays a part of, you know.
All right, what you need to know now, Patricia?
All right, what what I need to know now is what tax rate you are thinking.
Thinking penny and a half, that's me.
All right, and I need to show hands on that. All right, I don't have a consensus on that.
Oh, which one, I was.
Uh, the one.
One and a half.
Yeah, that's fine for now.
So three to two. Um, then we go down, so that means there's seven hundred and forty-seven thousand unallocated.
Mm-hmm.
Does the court want to allocate any of that money? And at the bottom are the consensus items that are not included, and that's the one percent or the equivalent six hundred flat. Show a hand, yes?
Uh, i- if you're just gonna do the six hundred flat and not the whole thing, I I would just say do the percentage and. Put added in the percentage would be.
Well, explain it to us.
You know, I mean, you talk about do six hundred flat, if you're not gonna do the entire four percent that's above it, the six hundred flat. Just do the whole one percentage, whether it's four point. Two or five or whatever it is, add that six hundred into the percentage.
So that would mean, that would be, you would add a percent, so instead of giving a four percent across the board, you could give a five.
That means like you said, though, that that's gonna mean.
Well, the reality of it.
Six hundred flat. I mean, that way everybody gets something.
Part of the insurance costs that's going in.
You know?
Yeah.
But if you get it on a percentage.
Basically both, you wanna do.
I I would rather take the whole five percent. And divide it out by four hundred employees and and whatever that comes out, that's what it is, I mean. Because the reality of it, your your lower people on the low skin would get more money that way than we would.
Well, I understand, I I understand, but. I I can't, not, not.
We done with this. Yeah, you start falling behind on your.
I I don't see how those, you know, and if you're gonna do the six hundred, it's the same thing.
Well, no, because you're moving your market value, so so your market price, or what do you call it, market value would move up countywide, six hundred dollars.
Well, it'd be the same thing if you divided that by four hundred, it's still, everybody would move up the same amount all the way up.
The the difference in the approach is that, uh, with. A four percent, you would move each job up four percent. And then you would add a flat seven hundred and six, uh, six hundred on top of that. So you have moved all of your, your pay scales up the same percentage. And then each of them additional seven sixty, the other, there's no, I mean.
Yeah, oh, it's in your head.
So it's, it's just an approach now you're going to adjust your pay scale for future years.
I mean, if you, if you're adjusting it, that six hundred up, what's the difference with it all? Y'all are losing me on this one. I can I I will make a comment. Cleared out. Uh, two years ago, last year was the market study, two years ago, you did a hybrid. And what that did, you gave a percentage to all employees and then, but you put a war in there. So that everybody got.
Mm-hmm.
A fixed amount, or the percentage, whichever was greater. And with the benefit of that for our low-end employees was, for instance, if you do this. For the high-end people, they're gonna get a percentage of four point one, four point two, something like that. But for the lower-end employees, they're gonna get a percentage of something on the order of six or seven percent possibly. Or maybe it's only gonna be five point three or something, but their their percentage.
They get a bigger.
That's gonna be off base, I guess, what you're saying. Their percentage will be larger.
Yeah.
That's so that we help our lower-end employees continue to pay off, you know, the health insurance going up and. Buy some bread and things like that, so. Okay, you sold me on the six hundred dollars, sorry.
So, so Amy, you said eight hundred, so. If. Oh, so not real keen on longevity, then would we move some of that money up? And and get the insurance paid?
Yes, uh, that would be an option, especially if you're going with the one.
I'd rather do that.
Got a little bit of.
Need a two hundred, I think that's gonna bring that, that's one twenty-five down to about seventy-five.
Yeah.
So to add another two hundred, that's approximately a third of two forty.
Less four hundred employees, that's eighty thousand.
Eighty thousand, so.
At some point, but.
Yeah, if if the court wants.
I'd rather do that, I'd longevity.
The, uh, insurance, um, by not funding the IT analyst, you actually could bring that up to the eight. And if you, uh, and you'll have some of that left in your longevity increase too.
I like that, not funding the IT part.
And you can. No, you can move it around.
Did the court hear what Brandon said, the hundred thousand? Uh, that's part of the seven forty-seven, an option is to give back to Road and Rich.
You're going up to a cent and a half, give y'all the hundred thousand back that we took from you.
Give it back.
I like that too, yeah, yep.
I'll spend y'all's money, y'all voted for it.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna say this one more time, just to make sure, because lots of numbers. Uh, court is uh, going with about one and a half cent over uh, the no new tax rate. Funding uh, an, an increase of eight hundred dollars per in full-time equivalent. Additional uh, longevity increase going up to thirty dollars.
I thought we were gonna do, where we can go to eight hundred.
We can do, we can do the two hundred and the eight hundred up top, that math still works.
Does it?
Yeah, yeah.
Did we lose you again?
Because we.
You're taking eighty back, you're taking eighty out.
Increase the operating was a yes, and the SO.
Yeah.
Jail transport was a yes. Okay. Okay, um, what we will do is work on getting these. I said, we'll work on getting all these numbers plugged in by next week and, and give y'all some new numbers. And then next week, uh, I need y'all to get real committed on those numbers. Uh, because what we do on the fourteenth would be almost impossible to get new numbers by the fifteenth. Okay, so we'll put all these numbers in, get you something as soon as we can, uh, do the final look. Uh, as what you're going to propose uh, next week and uh.
I just wanna say this, Bill, I agree with you, we've got the position we worked, we did the no new revenue, no new rebate. But we did it all the years when everything was good, the economy was good, everything was growing. That's my biggest concern, now that the economy's slowing down, across the breads more, milk's hard. Now, now we're gonna steal that, that, that's my.
How are you saying your economy is slowing down, that we just, we have a four and a half cent rollback in our tax rate here? Our economy is banging. And um, yeah, and I've lived, and I, and I worked in, I worked in Conroe, Montgomery County, and they kept saying down there, with, you know, it's gonna slow down. Just like in their fifteenth year, waiting for it to slow down in Montgomery County, it's gonna keep. And that's one reason we, you get in the tax rolls while the times are good, you don't have to go when times are tough. You can, you can go to your people and say, hey, we can't do, we can't buy something or whatever. But you're positioned, you're in a position to be able to do that versus, sorry, we still have to come get three, four cents from you. Or a penny and a half when times are, when times are tough, but I don't look for us to slow down, we got two or three more good years. I've been able to drop our tax rate, I mean, you heard people in Texas, Grand Ranch, um, amount of houses, they're putting in our yonder.
You got about a hundred houses being built right.
Yeah, right now, and those houses are seven, eight, hundred, nine hundred thousand, million dollar home. That's huge money, and then the subdivision right behind them is coming in, I've got, that in my area, they're coming in. So, and hopefully, if you get a little factory guy, sometimes you get satellite support companies that come in behind them, so I think. I maybe grew wrong, but I see.
Need more industry than we do subdivision.
Yeah, and like I said, but report, um. San Houston, that last year, they set the record for the largest freshman class, this year, they broke that record for the largest freshman class, of people coming to San Houston.
But their overall student numbers now.
You what?
Their overall student numbers are now.
Well, maybe, but they have the lar- now they have the largest freshman class, and they have the largest sophomore class, so they're. They're weathered down, I guess, cause of the COVID years, they're still cycling out.
Due to the increase of our jail population.
They might be. I don't know, I, I don't know our demographics that are jailed. But uh, that's, I mean, that's what comes in, that's what I'm saying, we, these investments were making it sheriff like the four extra deputies, that's. That's, that's the cost that you have to pay when.
Well, and, and if we hadn't have done that, then you get a cigarette plan, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't think the public's gonna turn down.
No, I'm, I'm busy with quite a few folks out there, and everybody's on board with us adding those deputies.
Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, and it comes with a cost.
It comes with a cost, and you know, we don't know when the DPS people are gonna have a full showing in Walker County again, so you know, we've lost that presence here. I saw one yesterday, and I was kinda like, look, look at there.
He may have been going on.
Just passing through.
I'm proud to go on on Friday.
Budget workshop?
I do.
Okay.
Okay, uh, the financial policies. The financial policies. Very minor changes. Uh, the financial policies. Uh, if not, you can have a heist now.
Yeah.
Well, I know there was some challenges. Oh, I think the first one maybe. Oh, yeah, that is. Scratch down, uh, right now, the policy says that the county judge will designate. Uh, external audit review committee uh comprised of five to seven members. Uh, and that the uh. Once submitted, then the, the committee would be presented, and then talks about the primary responsibility. In reality, as it were done in many years. Generally, what the external audit review committee does is when. Uh, the years or the contracts are being renewed, which is once every five years, we go and move is.
Yeah.
Uh, they will meet with the companies and help select the, the firms that the county would go with.
I was on that one time, wasn't I?
You were, and um, generally, we get two or three. Uh, quite frankly, there's usually huge price differences between the three. They all need the basic qualifications, and in the past, the, the county uh has. Pretty much, they're familiar with the companies and they select, I think we need to do it, I don't know that. You want to require a minimum of five to be on that committee, it'd be up to court though. And I think this is the last year under our current contracts, so there would be an R and P similar. Generally, the, the judge and the purchasing agent work together to uh, select the firm, then make the recommendation to court. I think the next change, page sixteen. Um, just adding the words, other designated projects to the list of projects. Uh, page seventeen uh, is changing the narrative from saying that there's a transfer to the EMS fund. To saying there's a direct allocation of property tax, property tax to EMS. Page eighteen uh, is talking about that our new general capital projects fund that we created in the current year. Page nineteen uh, re-adding uh, some of our funds and red. And the Sheriff Commissary Fund is not a fiduciary fund, uh. GFOH, now that's reported, it's now considered a legislative designated fund. Oh, this is talking about the five hundred thousand that we transferred over to projects fund, which is such in the general fund. One word change on twenty-six. And that's it. Mainly just updates for how we're actually doing things in our new.
Alright, Mr. Chris.
Like anything else you wanna talk about?
You will send us something on what we decided later on in the.
Yes, I will, um, it, it, you know, it's quite a few numbers for we run and put the plug in the system, but we'll definitely get you. Something no later than next month.
Yeah, that's fine.
So on Monday, what are we actually doing?
On Monday, you're looking at these numbers all put together in the funds. You know, where you'll see what the effect had on fund balance, and literally see that the expenditures for each department increased by. The, the one percent, I mean, the eight hundred FTE, so you'll, you'll see. You'll see the final product of what it's going to look like. Uh, as far as the numbers, when it actually gets filed in the county clerks and what the notices to the public would look like.
So we need to be pretty well done next week.
Well, next week, um. Change it.
Yeah.
You decide on that change next week, so that'll give us the next week.
The fourteenth, it's got to be done.
Yeah, the fourteenth, to make any of those changes, if for some reason you decide you wanna go with the one percent versus the one and a half. I would request that you make that decision that way.
Early Monday, right?
Right, because then we'll have to redo all these.
I'll thank y'all for everything y'all done.
And the appraisal district really worked all weekend on a Stacy appraisal district on these expert complications. So they were trying to get them to us.
I know I say this every year, but I don't know how you put up with us.
Time is eleven thirty-nine, courts adjourn.